Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez? Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Switchy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that we excuse the absent councilperson.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, we excuse Councilmember Perez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So, first thing on the agenda is a special presentation on an enforcement plan for the upcoming July 4th fireworks. And we're fortunate tonight to have Chief of Police Kevin Molossevich and also Rick Marshall, who's the chief of the Renton Regional Fire Authority. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Chief Molossevich and I would like to speak to you this evening briefly, just to give you an update on where we are with the Fourth of July plan and specifically with regards to the fireworks ban and enforcement of it. And I can say at the onset that being, working for the fire department for 33 years and being involved since the ban was put into effect, that the response to this enforcement by police and fire this year will be really unparalleled to years past. And I'm really proud of the coordination that we've been able to have between the police and the fire department. With regards to the fire department specifically, we are going to have two deputy fire marshals that are at the park. They are going to be going over the fireworks display there and making sure that everything is working appropriately. And we're also going to have some of our firefighters on scene at the park stationed there throughout the day and the evening, including members of our water rescue team and then an aid car to handle any EMS calls that occur there at the park. As far as enforcement goes, we're going to have five vehicles this year on the road that are dedicated specifically to enforcement. Those vehicles will be made up of, they'll be jointly staffed by a member of police as well as a member from the fire department. They will be staffed from 6:00 PM until 1:00 AM and they will be confiscating any fireworks that they see. In addition to that, they will be citing citizens who have fireworks, but that will be based on kind of a as-needed basis. The plan is, is that they will be asked to surrender their fireworks. And if they choose not to do that, then they will be cited and then we will confiscate the fireworks. So, and, and the other step that we've taken this year is that we've increased significantly our capacity to take in fireworks. That has been one of the challenges that we've had in years past is that very early on in the evening, we had to stop collecting the fireworks because we didn't have the storage capacity. This year, we are very confident we've got enough capacity to continue confiscations throughout the balance of the evening. And in addition to that, we will have fire units when they're not responding to calls. And keep in mind that we have hundreds and hundreds of calls that come in on the Fourth of July. And we've got currently six fire stations and 12 units that are not only available for the emergency calls, but to handle those fireworks, calls and those fireworks complaints. But they will be out on the streets when they're not on an emergency call, patrolling the neighborhoods and doing what they can to enforce the fireworks ban as well. It is important to remember that, and Chief Molossevich, I think, can go into this in greater detail, that, that generally speaking, when a call comes in for a fireworks complaint, by the time we're able to get a unit out to that location, the, the event has gone off. People are back inside their house or they're in their backyard, areas that we can't get to, to cite or to confiscate. So, this is, it's a very frustrating day for us in the fire department. We would like to be able to do more than what we're able to do. And I think it's important that we do kind of set expectations for everyone that our resources, while we will be doing a better job this year, and I'm confident that on July 5th, we will be able to speak to much greater results, that you're not going to, we're not going to get to everybody. And that's just the plain truth. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Molossevich.
Thanks, Rick. Every year, we're challenged with enforcing our fireworks ban. However, this year, the city of Kent has initiated their ban, but unfortunately, just you can step outside the corporate city limits of Renton and purchase the safe and sane fireworks. And then you can travel not too far to purchase the prohibited fireworks. You can buy it, for example, in Muckleshoot Indian Reservation. But we are seeing a trend over time that the fireworks complaints are slowly going down. Chief talked a little bit about the frustrations with the fire department and the police department. It's also with the community because each year, they expect that once we initiated this fireworks ban, that we would no longer hear fireworks, and that has just not been the case. But we're going to try to do a better job this year. I'll go over three things, basically, our response in patrol, our response down at Jean Coulon, and then just go over a little bit of our enforcement expectations and challenges with enforcing the fireworks. On the Fourth of July, we do not allow any time off in patrol. And so we will be at our maximum staffing with two supervisors and 12 officers during the day, two supervisors and 12 officers during the night. So we expect everyone who's scheduled to work to work that day. However, their main priority will be routine calls for service. And when they're not responding to calls for service, there will be expectations to enforce our fireworks ban. Chief, we talked about the four officers that'll team up with the fire inspectors. Also, at about 6 o'clock on the Fourth, we'll have five two-officer cars out there patrolling the streets of Renton to work on fireworks enforcement. These vehicles will be marked or unmarked depending what vehicles are available. At Coulon, we'll have officers in the park starting at 5:30 in the morning and building through the day and have 11 officers by about 7 o'clock to handle some of the crowd, early morning crowds we see at Jean Coulon. Then about 3 o'clock, as there's kind of a shift change, we'll have 24 officers in Jean Coulon. At the end of the fireworks show, we'll have 10 employees from Public Works and CED that will help us with the traffic flow and getting the park cleared out. Usually takes a couple hours after the fireworks complaint. As far as enforcement expectations and challenges, all fireworks are prohibited in the city of Renton. What's normally called "safe and sane," the possession of those type of fireworks is an infraction. The possession of the more illegal fireworks is either a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor depending on the amount of weight of the fireworks. One of the problems we face that the chief talked about a little bit is, is when it comes to fireworks possession, we have to meet the legal definition of possession. If we come upon an intersection, we see a crowd of, of young adults crowding around, you know, 50 pieces of fireworks on the ground, you know, we cannot charge anyone with possession because we have to prove who has possession. We can certainly confiscate the fireworks and we will, but it's difficult to prove possession. And the same issue comes with igniting or lighting the fireworks. We have, actually have to see someone igniting the fireworks to charge with the igniting. And some of the issues we have, as it gets darker and people start firing fireworks off in their backyard that happens to be fenced, we obviously can't enter into a fenced area without a search warrant. We can do a knock and talk and talk with the owners if they choose to answer the door. Otherwise, there's, there's not much we can do, absence of getting a warrant. So one of the bigger issues is, is dealing with expectations. This year, we're having one of the largest amount of coordinated effort between police and fire out there. We're hoping to have an impact. But at the same time, you know, it's the Fourth of July and we still anticipate responding to hundreds of calls for service, starting usually around about the 28th, I think is when they start selling the safe and sane fireworks out and outside the city limits through the Fourth. And so, I know the reader boards, I think, are going to be out there. We've sent out a lot of communication. Fire chief's had his folks out with leaflets. And so, we'll do up a better plan this year and we'll just see how it works. And we'll get together after the Fourth and, and see where it was effective, maybe where we fell short. And then we'll come up with a better plan for next year.
Okay. Thank you to both of you. I want to just thank both the Renton Regional Fire Authority and also Renton PD for working really well together this year to develop this plan and the cooperation of inspectors and police officers in developing a strategy to work together to address the issue. I think, as you have mentioned, this will be a higher level of enforcement than we've ever had in the city. And quite frankly, people that receive an expensive citation can't say they weren't warned. I mean, the city's been trying to emphasize this for a lot of years. And the thing I always like to remind people, the reason we have a fireworks ban is because the citizens of Renton voted for it, so we're enforcing that law. But it is a national celebration and it's very confusing when, as you said, Chief Marshall, that you walk across the roadway in Fairwood and you can buy them legally. And now you can't fire them in Kent or Renton, which it makes it a little bit confusing. So, any questions or comments from council? Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Amanda, we're going to work, move on to a public hearing.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Oskren. I'm with the Property and Technical Services Manager with the Community and Economic Development. Tonight, I'm here to present a public hearing on a surplus property called the former Highlands Library. The property has been identified during project scoping to be surplus property as the new library is opened and it's beautiful. Per our city policy, we are going through the steps that we have to find. And this is part, we, through the determination, we're asking that this be surplus property. Okay, so the area is in the Sunset neighborhood. And this is the area that we're asking to be surplus property. It was a larger piece of property. We have short-platted the area, so just to define the actual library building and the property around it would be the only items for the surplus. It was platted in 1956. The building was built in 1973 according King County. It was short-platted this year, just finished. And we have, the city does have utilities servicing the property, but they are located within the street right away. We sent out a internal review, seeing if any of the city departments were interested in this property. There was no interest from the city properties. The next step was to send to outside agencies, government, local agencies that would have interest in this property, Washdott, King County Real Estate, Renton Historical Society and the Renton Housing Authority. Of the two responses, the Renton Housing Authority is very interested in the property. There was an appraisal completed on June 10th, 2016. The property, the appraise, the fair market value for the surplus property was $885,000. And the Renton Housing Authority has committed to paying the fair market value on this property. So, I guess that kind of wraps it up. But basically, the, we would like to move forward with your approval for, to deem this as a surplus property and then to move forward with the transaction with the Renton Housing Authority for surplus property.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Any questions from council? Okay, any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Nobody has signed up to address the council on this topic. Was there anybody who wanted to speak to the council?
I'm Howard McCombray, live in the city of Renton. Been interested in this piece of property for a long time. I think the Renton Housing Authority could do wonderful things with it. Be very interested to see what they come up with for ideas and what to use it for. It has a great location and can be used for community service tremendously because it has a nice area, building solid and sound, a nice upcoming neighborhood. And so, we'd like to do what we can to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, well, we've got action coming up later, the committee of the whole report and also a resolution. So what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Prince?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving, uh, thanks, Amanda. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple of items. We're moving into the summer months, so a number of things that are of interest to, we hope, the community. First, wanted to just let folks know that today marks a, an old but important celebration. This is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. In 1865, on June 19th, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. It was two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, but it took that long really for the area down there to, soldiers frankly, to get down there to, to enforce the proclamation. So it's been celebrated over the years and is an opportunity for all of us to recognize that. So just wanted to make sure that council was aware and the community was aware. Tomorrow again, we have our farmer's market, 3 to 7:00 PM at the Piazza. Wanted to, again, just put a placeholder in people's schedules, the Bicycle and Trails Master Plan, holding an open house on the 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Senior Activity Center. So folks who are interested in input can attend that. We're continuing our Coffee with the Cop events this week, Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll be at Luther's Table. So folks who are interested in meeting and chatting with a police officer can, are invited to come down there. We also wanted to just mention, on June 24th, at 8:00 PM, we're having an open house for our emergency communications amateur radio volunteers, excuse me. They're participating in a 24-hour event this week to field test their equipment and ensure that in the event of a real emergency, they'd be able to operate as envisioned. But they're inviting the public to come down and take a look at their operations. That will be behind Fire Station 16, which is located at 12923 156th Avenue Southeast. Again, that's June 24th from noon to 8:00 PM. And finally, wanted to just mention that this week, we'll be opening the Henry Moses Aquatic Center and the Kenny Dell Beach Park and Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park on June 24th. So folks who are finally ready to go out there and get their swimming suits wet and come on down. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Covington. And it's supposed to be a warm weekend, so.
Perfect.
Okay, we don't have anybody sign up for audience comments, so moving on to the consent agenda. We have nine items for council consideration. Are there any items that council merely pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, committee of the whole has one committee report.
Okay, committee of the whole committee report requests a surplus property of former Highlands Library. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to surplus the former Highlands Library property at 2902 Northeast 12th Street, parcel number 7227802040. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, moving on to Mr. McGurven.
Uh, no one finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Switchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Aviation Committee has five committee reports.
Okay, Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report, Northeast 31st Street Bridge Replacement Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff request to approve execution of the agreement with Berger ABAM Incorporated for the Northeast 31st Street Bridge Replacement Project, which is TIP number 36. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Switchy.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Switchy, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next report is the Renton Avenue South Resurfacing Agreement with Gray &amp; Osborne. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the professional services agreement with Gray &amp; Osborne Incorporated in the amount of $125,283.03 for designing the Renton Avenue South Resurfacing Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Switchy.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Switchy, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next is in agreement with Washdott for the design and construction of the 405-167 interchange project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute GCB 2274 Cooperative Agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for design and construction of the I-405 SR-167 Interchange Direct Connector Project and to amend its companion agreement, GCB 2197 Project Coordinator Agreement, which was approved by the city council on May 23rd, 2016 by adding the following additional clause, 7.7. In consideration for review services rendered by the city on behalf of the project, Washdott will reimburse the city a one-time payment of $33,120. Washdott agrees to reimburse that amount to the city within 30 calendar days of the execution of this agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Switchy.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Transportation Aviation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Switchy, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next agreement is also with Washdott regarding water main relocation at SR-167. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute a utility agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of $136,630 for the purpose of coordinating with Washdott and participating in the design process of the water main relocation along the SR-167 corridor. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Switchy.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Transportation Aviation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Switchy, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I believe this is the final Transportation Committee report. It's also a utility agreement for water main relocation at South 14th Street. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute a utility agreement with no fiscal impact with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the purpose of coordinating with Washdott and participating in the design process of the water main relocation along the I-405 corridor. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Switchy.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Switchy, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two finance committee reports.
Okay, finance committee, committee report. This one's regarding the Renton Community Marketing Campaign Contract with Atlas Advertising. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the consultant contract with Atlas Advertising for execution of the marketing plan funded by the lodging tax funds and Renton Community Marketing Campaign Partner Match. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The final Finance Committee report is regarding a court security officer position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the transfer of the court security officer from a contracted position to a permanent full-time city employee under the direction of the municipal court judge. The position will be hired at grade A4, step A. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Corman?
And no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to legislation. We have one resolution, one ordinance for first reading and one ordinance for second and final.
Okay, the resolution is regarding the former Highlands Library property. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring the former Renton Highlands Library property located at 2902 Northeast 12th Street surplus and authorizing the mayor to sign such documents as necessary to transfer title, all as part of the overall Sunset redevelopment project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the, the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the ordinance for first reading is regarding the source, the income source discrimination ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 632.1 of the Renton Municipal Code, making the prohibition against income source discrimination permanent, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move this ordinance be moved to second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance for final, uh, second and final reading is a water and sewer revenue refunding bond. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the issuance of a water and sewer revenue refunding bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6.5 million for the purpose of refunding a portion of the city's water and sewer revenue and refunding bonds 2007, providing the form, terms and covenants of the bond, delegating certain authority to approve the final terms of the bond and authorizing other matters related thereto.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Switchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first on June 20th, on Tuesday, through the June 23rd, there'll be an AWC Annual Conference in Vancouver and there's a possibility of a quorum. And then also, on June 20th, there's a tour of Southport. And there will be a quorum at that, no action will be taken. And then on June 26th, at 5:00 PM, committee of the whole will meet. We'll have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And this will be discussion on the workshop on civic core vision plans. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGurven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just want to announce that the Utilities Committee will be meeting on Thursday, June 22nd, at 3:30 PM, or sorry, excuse me, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. One item on the agenda, waste reduction and recycling grant inter-agency agreement. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Switchy?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on next Monday, June 26th, at 3:30 PM, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room. Two topics, vouchers and emerging issues in revenue streams. And also, Mr. Mayor, I just want to pass on a compliment that I received yesterday. And actually, from my daughter. She was running the trail along the Cedar River and she saw the park rangers there. And she was very appreciative of the fact and there was a person on there that was kind of harassing people. And so, on a return trip, there were the park rangers who would summon the police department and take care of it. So she, she thought, and wanted me to pass on what a great program it is. And I told her she could volunteer.
That's right. Well, thank you for passing along and we'll make sure that the staff hears that.
And then, secondly, I got a concerned citizen approached me about the sidewalk in front of Tommy's Restaurant on Rainier Avenue. front of Tommy's Restaurant on Rainier Avenue, saying that there's no way a handicapped or wheelchair-bound person could use that sidewalk. So I just want to refer that on to the administration.
Okay. We'll take care of that.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, June 22nd, is canceled. And also, we just passed our ordinance on source of income discrimination. I'm referring it back into committee so that we can have a conversation about expansions.
Into planning and development?